Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the meeting of the City Council for today. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Armandares, would you please lead us?
Ready to begin.
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible)
Please remain standing for the invocation from Pastor Trevor Van Lahr.
Are we on? Well, good evening. I'd like to be here with you all. Please join me in prayer. As I began, oftentimes I like to look at history to tell us what to pray for, and I thought this was very well said by George Herbert Walker Bush, 42nd president, on his inauguration. Heavenly Father, we bow our heads and thank you for your love. Accept our thanks for the peace that yields us today and the shared faith that makes us continuance likely. Make us strong through your work, willing to heed and hear your will, and write on our hearts these words: Use power to help people. For we are given power not to advance our own purposes, not to make a great show of this world, nor in any. There is one just use of power, and it is to serve people. Help us to remember, Lord, and then I'll add on my own piece for this night. It is with the Spirit, Lord, that we thank you for the beginning of the Gourmet Alley Project. We are grateful for the provision of funds and the opportunities to renovate parts of our downtown. We pray for those who would be adversely affected and ask for a speedy and smooth buildup and minimal delay to disruption. We ask for your blessings on the guests and visitors of the Poppy Jasper Film Festival. We thank you for the gift of creativity and storytelling that has been shared here in Gilroy and beyond this week. Lastly, tonight we pray for wisdom as our city leaders discuss the business at hand, awarding contracts, revealing safety procedures, and recognizing staff members who deserve high praise. Please bless you for feeding with peace, unity, and openness. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. The City Clerk will report on posting the agenda.
Tonight's agenda was posted on Thursday, April 11th, at 4:30 p.m.
And now for roll.
Councilmember Bracco.
Here.
Councilmember Armandares.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Tovar.
Here.
Mayor Protem Marks.
Here.
Six present.
There are no orders of the day, and we have one employee introduction. Police Chief Espinoza will introduce Ritma Hernandez, our new community service officer.
Madam Mayor, I refer to him as Councilwoman. We are very happy to introduce our newest addition to our team, we but have not met this, which joined our ranks as a community service officer in the days of our actual start. Hosts of five who have appeared locally or fond its memories in playing bowling ball in a soccer at that Christmas at Park. Graduate of Christopher High School, currently enrolled at gambling college and getting ready to get her administration of justice paid. She actually joined the department as a explorer prior to getting higher competency as a show. Also a master protection officer for Walmart stores. Recently married, there are other women, and he has referred himself to be a Samuel H. Professor. In her spare time, enjoys hiking with her family in Mount Madonna, Uves Creek, and Rico, and some other local trails. Also enjoys cooking and breathing. Please help me welcome the big one.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen of the community. It is my pleasure and my honor to be working and serving for you guys in the Department. My main mission and my goal was to always help this community, and as someone from a younger generation, I would love to inspire more younger generations to go ahead and earn more bonds if you could. So I am a corporate steward of each one of you guys, and it's my pleasure to be here with you.
Thank you, Ritma. Welcome to the family. We have one ceremonial item. It's a proclamation. National Public Works Week proclamation, May 19th through the 25th, 2024, advancing quality of life for all. Heba El Gundy, as Public Works Director, would you join me up at the podium over here?
Whereas public works professional focus on infrastructure, facility, and services that are vital in order to sustainable and resilient communities as to the public health, quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Gilroy. And whereas the infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, toward engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, handle private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, city leaders, and children in the city of Gilroy to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and now therefore Marie Leighton, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, California, do hereby designate the week and may not cease through the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. She urged all citizens to join the branches of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. In witness whereof, she has hereunto set her hand and caused the seal of escape done at the city of Gilroy, California, its 15th day of April 4th. Okay? (applause)
If I may mention a small thing, we are proud and honored to serve our Gilroy community, and we're in the process of planning an event to celebrate the Public Works Week, which we will be publishing information about in the next month.
Okay. Thank you.[484.41][484.41](applause) We have no council correspondence, and we will now go on to presentations to the council. I will now open public comment at 6:08. And, let me get, okay. Bring this up on my screen, and I'm not bringing up any speakers. Beth, do we have any speakers?
We do. We have five speakers. Janice Filippa, Jan Guffey, Ron Kirkish, Robert Zapata, and Connie Rogers, if they would all come to the front.
Okay. Our first speaker is Janice Filippa. And since we only have five speakers, you will each have three minutes.
Would you mind if I went first? You are Jan Guffey.
I don't care.
I'm on the list.
All right. Sure. Okay, Jan.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jan Guffey, and I'm a member of the Gilroy branch of the American Association of University Women. Janice and Connie are here also with me. We're members of the Environmental Justice Committee of that group. Earth Day is coming up, April 22nd. As our ever-warming planet breaks heat records month by month and year by year, how are we preparing everyone here in Gilroy for a warmer future? One of the most impactful things we can all do is to get rid of our lawns, grow vegetables, and plant drought-tolerant plants. Why? Traditional lawns are composed of non-native grasses and plants that are not adapted to the region. They often require more water, fertilizers, and pesticides than lawns that use native grass and plants. The use of pesticides and fertilizer in maintenance has a negative impact on the environment and human health. Pesticides harm local wildlife and contaminate local water sources. Fertilizers lend to nutrient, will lead to nutrient runoff, which harms aquatic life and contributes to the growth of harmful algae. Traditional lawns consume more water than native landscapes, often requiring more frequent watering and leading to water waste. We've all seen water running down the gutters sometimes. The maintenance of traditional lawns requires the use of lawn equipment, such as lawn mowers, edgers, and trimmers, which can contribute to air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions. The use of these machines not only produces emissions, but also consumes fossil fuels, which are a limited and non-renewable source. My question to you all, leaders of our city, what are you doing to help people get rid of their lawns in Gilroy in cheap and effective ways and plant beautiful drought-tolerant plants and vegetables? Our planet Earth is calling out for our help. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Would the other two ladies like to go right after you? Okay. This must be Janice or Janice.
I'm Janice. Good evening. I'm Janice Filippa, and I'm a new member of the Environmental Committee for the University Women. And we formed a committee because we saw somehow somebody in the community needs to be educated as far as climate change. All of us need to. So we started out thinking we're going to gather information first before we do any action. We want to get educated on carbon and how it affects our climate, learn more about the economics, innovations, and renewable energy, and more, and find other organizations with similar goals and what they do. And as far as action, one thing that has drawn me in is reading about Senate Bill 1053, which probably you all have read. I will say I've not read it. It's either too small print or too many pages, but it's focusing on climate crisis, and it's focusing on paper bags, plastic bags. They're zeroing in on manufacturing of the plastic bags, the distribution of it, like your stores, like Safeway, Nob Hill, and me, you, us, the consumers. So it's a law that's very broad and something that I think we should all be paying attention to and support it if it comes our way. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Janice. Connie Rogers?
Good evening, council members. It's good to see you again. I can be pretty brief, actually, but I, since we are representing AAUW tonight, I'd like to give you a piece of history, and that is back in the 1970s, one of our members, Elaine Long, and her friend Joan Harrison, did a study about Uves Creek, and they thought that it was worth protecting, and then they talked to our mayor, Roberta Hewin, and she talked to Susie Wilson, who was on the Board of Supervisors, and that is how we got so lucky to have Uves Creek preserved. So tonight, I'm just here to ask what the status of the city's climate action plan is. I know we used to have one, and for various reasons, it probably hasn't been worked on lately, but it is something that I think would be desirable if the city would work on it, and I know our committee from AAUW would like to help the city become more environmentally conscious and carry out some projects. The second thing I'd like to mention is the city used to celebrate Earth Day, and I don't, I'm not sure whether it was the Parks Department or the Recreation Department or a combination thereof, but nonprofit groups had demonstrations and projects that kids could participate in, and the city gave away free compost. And it would be very nice to see that come back again next year. It's a little too late to plan it for this year, but we would, we're in support of getting our community members more involved in environmental protection and helping the city carry out some of the things that it can do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Connie. Ron Kirkish?
Good evening, Mayor, community, and staff. Last week, I started to speak about the who is A-BAG, who is MTC, given a familiar face. And I started out by naming a couple of names, but I want to hold on back that right now. I want to go back to the beginning of this, when Councilman Hilton wrote a couple of articles, or had a couple of articles in the Gilroy Life and the Gilroy Dispatch, and in the articles, he said, "We are now pulling in the same direction as the region's long-range plan for housing, transportation, economy, and the environment," known as Plan Bay Area 2050. And that's as far as it ever went. There was no where's-the-beef moment in there. What is it? What are you doing about housing, transportation? What do you want to do? So I did some work, and I've made quite a few copies. I gave a few copies of these to some electives in Morgan Hill, and, but this is where, this is the beef. This is more than just the headlines, and I'm going to be talking about these objectives here over the next several months, I imagine, up to election. So let's set, let's, I can't go through the whole list, but I'm going to name off a list, a few names, and where they came from, to give you an idea who A-BAG is, who makes up MTC. Nick Josephowicz is the vice chair, and he's the mayor's appointee from San Francisco. Eddie Hamon, he's the San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission. Hillary Ronan is from the city and county of San Francisco. Gordon Marr is a supervisor for the city and county of San Francisco. Rafael Mandelmann, supervisor, city and county of San Francisco. London Breed is the mayor, city, county of San Francisco. And Richard Hills is the planning director, city and county of San Francisco. And Janet Vettery, board member for the San Francisco Bay Area Regional Water Quality Control. So you can see there's quite a few people from San Francisco on here. If we go on, if I got time, I'm running out. Well, you know what? I think I've said enough. We know that San Francisco is what kind of city San Francisco is. It's a progressive city, and a lot of the ideas that I'm going to be speaking about are very progressive, and I'm out of time.
Thank you, Ron. Robert? Robert Zapata.
Good evening, council. I wanted to continue my last public comment, and it's interesting because I noticed, I left early, usually I do, but I noticed there was a consideration of a potential public safety sales tax ballot measure for this coming election, and I do want to be clear, I'm not against taxation. Actually, I'm in favor of taxation with representation. Unfortunately, at the local, state, and federal level, we don't have that. And coincidentally, what is today? It's Tax Day, so I'm sure everyone's trying to file their taxes and pay big government what they owe, or else they just automatically take it out of your savings or checking account, which is unconstitutional, if I might, if I'm understood correctly. But I do have a solution, and that solution is pretty simple, just abolish income tax, the personal income tax. Now, why do we pay taxes is very, obviously, we want, you know, good infrastructure, you know, safe communities. Obviously, here, you know, the tax measure is regarding to hire more police officers, firefighters, you know, just things that, you know, a civil society should have, but we don't. We have a lack of police enforcement. In other cities, it's much, much worse. Some cities are even being called in, and they can't even, you know, complete their job. So it's just very tragic where our country has gone. But one thing I want to be clear is, the three solutions are this. Abolish the IRS, which is the legal revenue system. That's what it really means. Abolish the income tax, which is not an amendment. I don't know why we call it an amendment. It's not an amendment. It's not part of the 16th Amendment. It's just completely nonsense. And then lastly, ban the Fed, the people, the private bank that prints our money from nothing. What is it backed by? You read the Constitution, it says, you know, they should coin silver and gold, you know, it has to be backed by something, but currently, what is it backed by? Well, it's backed by war, and we all know what's going on in Israel and everywhere else, you know? So there's no winning for Americans. It's just a win for globalism and the military-industrial complex and the deep populists that want to kill us all, but that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. I will close public comment at 6:22. Okay, reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco. Councilmember Armandares.
No meetings since last week.
Councilmember, I can't even talk right now. Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. From the Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee, the Santa Clara County VTA has released a Transit Oriented Communities Grant to seek proposals from Santa Clara County municipalities, jurisdictions, art, cultural, education, and nonprofit and other community organizations to support VTA's vision of equitable transit-oriented communities. The goal is to grow innovative and robust partnerships between VTA and the local public agencies, nonprofit, community organizations, and other diverse stakeholders to strengthen communities, increase transit ridership, reduce the need for car trips, and support intensive mixed-use, mixed-income development around light rail stations and transit hubs. Selected projects will be collaborative across community and/or local government partners and remove barriers to creating safe, walkable, healthy, resilient, and thriving neighborhoods next to transit. VTA will fund $750,000 in total to be eligible, to the eligible applicants. There's a pre-application workshop on April 30th from 1:30 to 2:30 at the Gilroy Library. I also want to provide some stats from the VTA bus routes here in Gilroy. This is from January 2024, and all have seen an increase in ridership year over year. The Rapid 568 is a 23% increase. The Express 121 is a 30% increase. The Frequent 68 is a 16% increase. Our local Route 84 is 25%. Local Route 85 is 38%, and local Route 86 is 20%. The Gilroy Moves Safely Public Awareness Campaign has launched and will run between April 5th and May 31st throughout Gilroy. The campaign messaging focuses on a safe system approach, reminding road users that no matter how you move around Gilroy to get to your destination, we should work together to get there safely. Marketing and resource materials created for this campaign highlight the importance that everyone deserves safe streets, and sharing the road begins with understanding that we all have a role and responsibility to keep our streets safe. These materials include a bilingual website with traffic safety tips, videos, and English and Spanish. The campaign also features ads displayed in key community locations, newspapers, social media, radio, and on the buses and bus shelters. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy at the April meeting, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy staff led a study session on the status of decarbonization programs related to residential electric vehicles and charging. The board was also presented with an update on the agency's permit modernization and policy initiatives for member jurisdictions. The SVC service territory emitted 3.1 million metric tons of CO2 in 2022, and 36% were from residential vehicles. While Santa Clara County leads the nation in new zero-emission vehicles, with sales of 42% of new vehicles in 2023, the vast majority of Santa Clara County light-duty vehicles are still fueled by gasoline and diesel. The SVC Board of Directors approved the Electric Joint Action Plan in 2019 to guide how the agency would support the region in adopting EVs and reduce emissions from fossil fuels. To date, SVC Board of Directors has dedicated $28 million to initiatives to support this transition, and SVC continues to expand its programs to reach low-income residents, renters, and affordable housing properties. SVC's approach to move away from fossil fuel vehicles includes supporting EVs, improving the accessibility and reliability of EV chargers, and encouraging optimal EV charging. Silicon Valley Clean Energy has a permit modernization and policy experimental program which provides 4 million in technical resources and support to help member agencies adopt local policies and approve permit practices. SVC offers these services to help align local building codes and permitting processes with forthcoming state and regional mandates to support a smooth transition to pollution-free buildings. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
No report.
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. Couple things. I, along with Councilmember Klein, we had the honor of attending the Gilroy Fire Department new hire and promotion ceremony this weekend, along with many of our staff members. And again, I want to congratulate those veteran firefighters who have been promoted and those newly hired firefighters as well. Congratulations to them, and welcome to the Gilroy family. And finally, I want to just say thank you to the families who stand behind our firefighters. Next, just want to thank everybody who's been out there supporting the Poppy Jasper Film Festival. It's great to see so many of our businesses supporting the film festival, allowing them to use their facilities, and really working hand-in-hand with the film festival, so I want to thank everybody. And then finally, I want to just thank all those community members and business owners who've reached out, not only to myself, but many other council members, to share their concerns and comments and, you know, some frustrations, but also some good news, obviously. So again, I want to thank them for reaching out to us, sharing with us kind of the things that we can do better or the things that we are doing better, so I want to thank them for that, and please continue to reach out to us. Thank you.
All right. And my report. The Downtown Committee met this past Tuesday. The subcommittee reported on code enforcement and the challenges of keeping up with the number of citations that have been issued, and more code enforcement on the horizon. This committee will be presenting their findings and concerns at the council's May 6th meeting for discussion by all. And that is it. Let's move on now to the consent calendar. Beth, do we have any public comment?
No public speakers.
Move for approval?
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Roll call.
It doesn't need a roll call if you want to vote by light. You can do it either way.
Oh, I mean.
Okay. If you already started, then.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Marks?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Okay. Thank you. Bids and proposals, 7.1. Award a contract to McKim Corporation for the fiscal year 24, citywide pavement rehabilitation project number 24-PW-288, in the amount of $3,899,534.55. Approve a project contingency of $583,061.45. And approve a total project expenditure of $4,482,596 for construction. So Heba, you will be doing the report.
Thank you, honorable councilmembers. This item will cover the staff recommendation to award this fiscal year's pavement rehabilitation project to McKim Corporation. To provide a little bit of background information, in September of 2021, City Council approved a five-year street repair program in order to improve the pavement condition index throughout the city, which was 62 at the time. In June of last year, City Council adopted the fiscal year 24 as well as fiscal year 25 budget and CIP program for fiscal years 24 through fiscal year 28, including this year's pavement rehabilitation project, which will implement pavement preventive maintenance and rehabilitation of 58 street segments as well as two alleyway segments. The project scope, as I mentioned, will cover various types of work, including slurry seal, Cape Seal, which is rubberized chip seal, and slurry seal, and overall asphalt overlay, and be a statement of pavement marking with the inclusion of bike lanes on most corridors for 58 street segments. In addition, to an overlay on two alleyway segments, the alley that's located between Church and Eagleberry Streets, between Sixth and Seventh, and between Eighth and Ninth. The bidding process started in February and was advertised in the San Jose Mercury as well as the city's website and the builder's exchanges. We opened the bids on March 20th, and we received three bids from McKim Corporation, Tyker Construction, and Radius Earthwork. McKim Corporation was the lowest bidder with acceptable scope that's consistent with that it was for this. This slide compares the various bids that we received in relation to the initial engineer's estimate. And I will stop at this slide to clarify a few points. The base bid is for the 58 segments, while the alternative one is for the two alley segments that I mentioned. Alternative two was supposed to be for widening of a narrow segment on Thomas Road. However, in researching it, we found out that we're in need of private way, and it would have delayed the process. So that will not be included in the scope. As we can see, the McKim Corporation's bid came to $4,730,000 approximately, Tyker at $4,320,000, and Radius Earthwork at $4,488,000. I should also clarify that Thomas Road is included in the scope between Los Chasas and Santa Teresa. We initially were planning on removing this roadway segment because we received an encroachment permit from VTA for the US 101 State Trap 25 interchange improvements, which would divert traffic to Thomas Road. And we requested a schedule for the project. In attending the mobility coordination meeting last week, it seems that the interchange work, the ramp work, will not commence until '25, with the bridge in '26 and closure of the interchange improvements in '27. So we do have time to implement the pavement rehab on Thomas Road, and it's still included in the scope. So the base bid came at $3,742,000 approximately, was built all at $158,000, for a total award of $3,899,534. This leaves us with contingency of $583,000, about 15%. But I should also mention that we will utilize the contingency to the extent possible to improve additional segments, including the railroad alleyway we're planning the Cape Seal. Where the funds is being used for this project? About $1.5 million from SB 1, about $900,000 from Measure B Fund, $500,000 from Gas Tax Fund, and $1.6 million from the General Fund. And the purpose of this slide is to illustrate the effort that is being carried out in terms of pavement rehabilitation over the years. Those roadway segments show what was done in fiscal year 19, 20, and 21. After the council approval and enhancements of the program, the five-year street repair program, we were able to implement these roadway segments in fiscal year '22 for about $4.5 million. These added roadway segments in fiscal year '23 for about $6.5 million. And the cost, it depends on the inflation and the cost of the year, the type of work that's being covered on the roadway segments. So it's not just the mileage. And this is the work that's being planned for this year for about $4.5 million. Majority of the work, about 68%, will be in the form of slurry seal. That's an aggregate texture that's spread evenly on the roadway surface. And it extends the design line of the roadway for about five to 10 years. It's most suitable for roadways that are in reasonable condition. So we cannot implement it for roadways that are damaged and have wide cracks and so forth. About 21% is Cape Seal, which is, as I mentioned, is rubberized chip seal and slurry seal, similar to what we will be implementing on railroad alley. About half an inch of rubberized chip seal and then the slurry seal. About 11% of the planned roadwork is on highly damaged roadways, which will involve grinding and asphalt overlay. For example, Red Avenue would have a three-inch overlay. With that, staff is requesting and recommending the council approval and award of a contract to McKim Corporation in the amount of $3,899,534.55. Approve a project contingency in the amount of $583,061.45, about 15%. Approve a total project expenditure of $4,452,596 for the fiscal year '24 citywide pavement rehabilitation project, public work number 288. And also as the city administrator execute the contract and associate the properties. Thank you, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'm going to go to public comment first before we hear from the council. Beth, any speakers?
No public comment.
All right. Council members. Cue up, and I don't see any council members.
I raised my hand.
Oh. I have to click on that. Uh-huh.
Oops.
Okay.
Sorry.
And then?
It's not showing my mic anywhere.
There it is now. Try speakers.
Okay. No, it's not. Oh, okay. I see Fred, but... Okay. Well, no, Councilmember Armandares was first. So let me have her go first, okay? Did anyone else cue up to speak other than Councilmember Tovar? Okay, so just, all right, go ahead. Councilmember Armandares?
Thank you. Thank you, Heba, and to your staff for this work. I just have a couple of questions regarding the different types of seal that can be used. So if you could elaborate more on the difference in terms of the cost, how long they last, and I assume that you mentioned slurry seal is for reasonable conditions and the grind in asphalt is for more intense damage, right? So the Cape Seal is for moderate damage? Is that true?
Yes. And the cost of slurry seal is about $35,000 per mile per lane. But again, this is most appropriate for roadways that are not significantly damaged. It has thin cracks that could be mitigated with the slurry seal. The Cape Seal is two layers, which is the rubberized chip seal, which is typically about half an inch, and on top of that is the slurry seal. The combination of the two is Cape Seal, which is for more damaged roadways. An example of that that I mentioned is the Cape Seal plan for railroad alley. The grinding the roadway and a full overlay, and overlay could vary, could be two inches, three inches, or six inches, depending on how much we have to grind. And I mentioned Red Avenue bid as an example of midway, which is three inches overlay. This is when the roadway is in poor or significantly poor condition.
Thank you. And which of these will be used on the Church to Eagleberry alleyway? Do you know offhand? Because it's pretty intensely damaged.
It was Cape Seal. I'm sorry. I don't know exactly.
Is it usually appropriate for the grind in asphalt to be done in alleyways?
Possibly.
It is? Okay.
It depends on the condition of the roadway.
Yeah, I just...
Whether it's regardless of the classification or the alleyway.
Yeah. I know it's pretty intensely damaged. It hasn't been worked on in decades, so...
Yes. And for this year, we're covering this alleyway between Church and Eagleberry in addition to the railroad alley. And in future years, we will be looking into improving other alleyways.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. Heba, let me thank you and commend you for a wonderful presentation. I appreciate you putting in the bids, the different bids, obviously, and kind of the details where, obviously, I know many of us have had community members call out to us about this here. And obviously, from reading what you submitted to us, I mean, it was very helpful. So I want to thank you for that. And obviously, as you know, the McKim contractors are here in Gilroy, so it's good to see $3.9 million staying in our city. So thank you for that and for, you know, including the bids in there as well. Thank you.
Any other council member?
Okay, I have just a couple of questions. I know we approved a five-year street plan, but with the really bad winters that we've had these past two years, two streets that are highly trafficked have taken a beating. And I was just wondering, is there anything that could be done for them? It's Principally between First and Third. It's right by a park and by the middle school, so it does get a lot of traffic. And Miller Avenue between Sixth and Eighth. Even the intersection at Sixth and Miller has a huge chuckle. I know last year, Public Works came in, they filled in the holes, but now they just got washed away. And of course, the more traffic that travels over it, it just keeps getting wider and wider. So anything that could be done? I know the residents would be really appreciative of it. And then I have a question. Let's go back to the Thomas Road widening of that little piece. You were talking about, let's see. You were talking about pavement rehab. Will that little piece, maybe in the future, be widened once we get the easement? Or what are the plans?
Yes. And we will try actually to improve this section as soon as possible.
Is that the one closest to Santa Teresa?
It's closer to Santa Teresa.
Yes, okay.
It's an accessory block. And part of the reason that we wanted to include it this year is because Thomas Road will have bike lanes, and we did not want to stop the bike lanes at the middle of the road.
Sure.
That's not a safe design, per se, where we would have to taper and divert cyclists to share the local lanes. But when we realized that it's going to delay the project, we decided to just handle it separately.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your report.
Another question?
Sure.
When you're ready.
Sure. Don't go ahead.
Heba, could you remind us what the process is to recommend streets? Or if a community member wants their street to be included in these projects? What does the city do? Like, what's the process to evaluate them? And is there a waiting list or a list of priorities? How does that happen?
We receive requests and we evaluate them. We also have a network of street saver that identify the roadway condition. And I'm sorry, that's not part of the...
That's okay.
Presentation.
Yeah.
But for the various roadway types, various classes, arterial, major collectors, local, we have database on the condition of the roadway, whether it's mild, poor, or like different classes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. There's no further discussion. Would someone like to move?
Second?
All right. We have a motion and a second. And Beth?
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Marks?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor Protem, today, I just got someone emailing saying that they can't hear when someone's speaking at this mic here. Yeah, the folks out there can't hear, so...
Oh, all right. It sounds like it's on, but would someone like to check the mic to see if it can be turned up?
Yeah, people can't, they can't hear it from TV land, so...
Oh, okay. Shall we take... Okay, we'll just take a couple of seconds.
It is. Hello? Can you hear me? Yeah, all right. Well, we sound like we can hear you. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and get started? We're going, I may be opening the public hearing. Public hearing to establish a list of properties subject to the Weed Abatement Program and adoption of a resolution authorizing the fire chief to abate the nuisance arising out of weeds, weeds growing, and refuse accumulating upon property in the city of Gilroy pursuant to Section 12.50. to section twelve-point-fifty-one of the Gilroy Code. If there is anyone here who wants to protest their name being on this list, please give your information to the city clerk, and you may speak during public comment. First of all, is there any ex parte communications that any of the fellow council members have received? No?
No.
All right, we have Jim Wyatt, Fire Chief, who's going to be giving this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Actually, I'd like to turn over the presentation of the report by the person that actually prepared it, and that would be our Deputy Fire Marshal Jonathan Crick.
Good evening, City Council and Gilroy residents. Tonight's agenda item covers the second step in the annual weed abatement program. Previously, at the February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting, City Council adopted Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero-six, declaring weeds and refuse a public nuisance. Along with that agenda item was a list of properties with a history of noncompliance for weed abatement. The annual weed abatement process complies with both the city code and the state health and safety code, which require that prior to authorizing the abatement of a lot, the city hold the public hearing of these subject properties. This meeting not only authorizes the fire chief to abate nuisances such as weeds and refuse, but also allows property owners to request their property to be removed from the list. All subject property owners identified on the commencement list receive the public hearing notice, weed abatement instructions, and information on the fees. Property owners are also informed that the weed abatement deadline is May fifteenth of each year. Any property owners which are present at tonight's meeting may request to have their property removed from the list by providing an explanation for why the property should be removed. The request will be taken under consideration by the Gilroy Fire Department, the Santa Clara County Weed Abatement Program, and City Council. If anyone is present, then please request a time to speak. And if there are any questions, I have the Santa Clara County Weed Abatement Program Manager, Mo Cumery, and myself and Chief Wyatt are here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I will open up the public hearing at six fifty-two. Do we have any speakers?
No public speakers.
Then I will close the public hearing at six fifty-three. All right, council, I see Councilmember Armendaris has her hand up.
I do?
Oh, yes.
Wow.
It's the last one.
I'd be happy to make a motion to accept this.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and Beth, how do we do this?
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Marks?
Yes.
Six to zero.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There is no unfinished business, and now we go to ten point one, introduction of new business, emergency operations plan update. Andrew Young is going to be giving this presentation on emergency services and volunteer, oh, I'm sorry, Andrew Young, who's the emergency services and volunteer coordinator, is going to be giving this report.
Good evening, City Council, City of Gilroy community members. Get this PowerPoint up. So again, Andrew Young, emergency services and volunteer coordinator for the city of Gilroy, and tonight we'll be discussing the draft emergency operations plan and update. So, an EOP establishes the emergency management organization to provide a basis for jurisdictions' coordinated actions before, during, and after a disaster. And the primary purpose is to outline our jurisdiction's all hazard approach to emergency operations and protect our community's safety, health, and welfare. This EOP applies to the boundaries of the city of Gilroy. However, it's important to recognize that large-scale emergencies and disasters can occur across one or more political subdivisions, and this document demonstrates how the city will coordinate internally and externally to ensure effective incident management, and not only in Gilroy, but the surrounding unincorporated areas. EOPs should be reviewed and updated and tested very early to ensure that the document remains relevant. This draft update builds upon elements in the two thousand nine version by accounting for changes within our organization, the community, and the environment. Emergency management best practices, practitioner and stakeholder feedback, lessons learned, and regulatory updates were also a consideration in updating the document. This document is consistent with guidelines identified within the Cali, LaFornia Office of Emergency Services, Crosswalk for local government agencies, and FEMA's Comprehensive Preparedness Guide. Now, when we're taking a look at the city code, there are elements outlined in the code that were also reinforced in the emergency operations plan, and such as, the code, chapter nine, establishes the emergency organization under the direction of the city administrator as the Director of Emergency Services to provide for the direction and control of disaster service worker personnel and resources. The director may proclaim the presence of a local emergency, and council must ratify within seven days, and review every twenty-one days until the emergency is terminated. The director is empowered to develop and update emergency plans and manage emergency programs. All plans and emergency programs are managed under the emergency management division under the direction of the Director of Emergency Services. So what is an EOP? It's a framework, it's guidance to respond to any threat to Gilroy, and it's often being directed from the emergency operations center. It establishes operational goals, priorities, and strategies, such as operational priorities being to save lives, protect health and safety, protect property, and preserve the environment. And it also builds upon operational goals and strategies. For example, mitigating hazards, we want to take actions to reduce impacts to our community. Meet basic human needs, we want to take action to provide for safeguarding of our residents, whether it be through provision of food, water, shelter. We want to address the needs of populations with access and functional needs, those with medical conditions or disabilities. And we also need to restore essential services, such as utilities, gas, water. We need to coordinate with the different organizations externally and internally to be able to ensure that we get those essentials back online, to be able to support those basic needs, and support community and economic recovery. We want to work with our community to make sure that we are effective and efficient in delivering an equitable recovery to all of our community members. And this plan, it works in collaboration with other emergency planning documents, and it's important to have that integrating planning across all documents, across other organizations, to make sure that we work well together as we are mitigating, preparing, responding, and recovering from disasters. And this is a living document. It needs to be constantly approved upon. We need to be, again, at a minimum, every two years, reviewing and updating, if it needs to be updated, based on our findings, whether in response to training and exercise or a real-life incident. What an EOP, emergency operations plan, is not, it's not overly prescriptive, it's not all-encompassing, and it's not hazard-specific. An EOP should not be rigid, and it must simply provide a framework that will support changing conditions, and it can't be hazard-specific, because it needs to be all-hazard so we can seamlessly address conditions as they change. It's not a standalone document. There will be other documents that are referenced that support this plan and provide additional guidance. It's not tactical. We're very strategic in the emergency operations center, and this document intends to demonstrate how the emergency operations center, the emergency organization responds to an emergency. EOCs are very coordination-centric and strategically focused to establish a general plan or direction to accomplish objectives. Field operations, including law, fire, and public works, will utilize tactics specifically in how the strategies will be executed. This document, it's not necessarily community-facing, it should be available to the public for reference, but it's not providing a direction to the community, guidance to the community. It's really intended for city officials, departments, and partner agencies, so we can all be on the same page and work seamlessly. What the community needs to know, the city does have a plan, we train, we exercise on it. We have regular EOC meetings to reinforce this, emergency operations center meetings. But you need a plan, and you need to prepare, and we can help you, we want to help you, and we ask that you reach out so that we can help you with your planning, so you can be more ready. So take an opportunity to engage in any training opportunities, workshops, or even become an emergency management volunteer and support the city in building capacity as part of the emergency organization. Sign up for emergency alerts and community notifications through Alert SEC and NICSLE. Know where to turn for accurate information, our city website, social media, and even AM Radio sixteen-ten. So some of the key details in this plan, when we're looking at whole-community approach, we really want to incorporate stakeholder feedback into activities. For example, recovery, we want sustained feedback of our many partners that enact a shared vision that will lead to a more improved and resilient city. We're talking about the organizational structure. We have laid out everyone's position within the emergency organization, whether they're in the field working for fire, law, or public works, or assigned to emergency operations center position, or care and shelter position, just to share some examples. Succession, this document clearly outlines who's assigned to what and who's a backup, lines of authority. It clearly lays out who's in charge through the chain of command and authorizes supervisory permission to direct others. Activation procedures, it demonstrates why, when, and how the EOC, emergency operations center, is activated. It provides the legal authorities, the laws and regulations, whether federal, state, or local level. Continuity government, and this includes the lines of succession, and identification of alternate facilities should the emergency operations building or city council or other building not be available due to a disaster. Concept of operations, this describes how the national incident management system and California's standardized emergency management system and all organizations are able to seamlessly and effectively work together, whether government, private sector, non-government organizations. And then lastly, it clearly outlines departmental roles in the emergency operation organization, and it clearly identifies roles within the emergency operations center. Now, as we move into the phases of emergency management, we have multiple elements that we're looking at. Mitigation, which, for instance, the last plan that we approved was in two thousand eighteen, we currently have our latest multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan under review by Caloas and FEMA, and that is a plan that essentially, it's utilized to reduce loss of life and property and minimize the impact of disaster. It helps us identify the natural disaster risk and common vulnerabilities and be able to prioritize what we need to plan for and how we should be preparing our community. As for preparedness, we're doing community outreach, whether it be workshops, tabling events, any training opportunities, maybe it's a community emergency response team training program. And then, as a city, we're planning, we're training, we're doing exercises, and then as we go into response, we may proclaim an emergency, a local emergency, and the operations begin. We have the field units addressing immediate needs through their standard operating procedures. And then we have the emergency operations center that's planning and anticipating needs to be able to support the field effectively. And there's many elements in which we can't possibly go into great detail, but it covers resource management, planning and intelligence, crisis communications, and action planning, and finance, and administration. As we go into recovery, we're looking at short and long-term recovery. This document describes all elements, and short-term recovery could be simply as care and shelter, debris management, medical, health, and behavioral health. And long-term could also have some of those elements, but it also has housing solutions and mitigation activities. What are we going to do to improve the community to reduce any further impacts from future disasters? And then it describes the damage assessment process and how it's crucial to the recovery process, and assistance programs are also identified in this document, such as those authorized under the California Disaster Assistance Act and FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Program and Public Assistance Programs. Now, as we look at plan distribution, we will have this available to staff in our primary and alternate EOCs, and it will also be available electronically to city staff on a shared drive. We'll share with partner agencies and organizations, and it'll also be publicly available on the city website. And to make it even more accessible to additional populations, we can look at having printed versions as well that would be available upon request, either at the information desk, and we could even work with the library to possibly talk about having a copy in their reference section as well. And also, it may be beneficial to ensure that we have effective translation of documents to meet the needs of our community as well. So the next steps is really just to, we're seeking additional guidance, and we're going to need to finalize the draft, and then what we want to do is return to city council for adoption. And then from there, we will orient and train our staff and begin drills and exercises aside from what we've been doing with the old plan, and then we'll make those updates as required, and we'll continue to create new supporting documents to go along with the emergency operations plan. Any questions?
Do we have, I would like to open up public comment. Do we, yes, I think we do.
Thank you for that. It does, this reminds me of a couple of the issues we had when we first moved here back in the eighties. We had a flood, we also had an earthquake, and so it's nice to know that we have something like this in preparation for issues that we have in the city in the future. I guess what my question is, is do we know, you know, as we build our city, we're building high-rises, four feet... we're building high rises four feet, four floors high, and that's probably going to go higher. Do we have things like that, you know, things, emergency, do we have emergency plans for those kind of buildings should we have a large earthquake? Or even a fire, you know? Can we, you know, do the citizens have a way to get that information, what to do, or what the city's going to do? It's those kind of things, I think, that gets down to the nitty-gritty, the lower level, the people. And it's nice to know we have the plans, but what can we do to notify people the kind of nature, the nature of the possible crisis? And what some strategies are? Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any other public comments? All right, I will close it. And council, any questions from you? Council member Armandares?
Thank you. I have a question for...
Oh, question for, is it Andrew? If you could join us again.
Thank you, Andrew, for your presentation. I'm wondering, what are the local and regional emergency operations planning committees or agencies? And do we meet with them regularly?
Yes, we work with the surrounding jurisdictions, including the County Office of Emergency Management in the surrounding areas of Gilroy. We want to make sure, again, that our plans are streamlined and so we have no issues in making sure that our communication and coordination is well off for the next incident.
So they meet regularly, and we're part of those meetings?
We are part of when they bring the, when they create new plans, develop new plans, we are part of that process.
Okay. But do they have regular meetings?
Not for the same plan, no, necessarily. When they do updates on a plan, for example, the Emergency Operations Plan, if they do any updates before a five-year period, we are part of that conversation for the County Office of Emergency Management. And then when they introduce new plans, we're part of that conversation, and if they have to update those as well, they'll make sure to get that input from all these stakeholders within the county.
Okay. Yeah, just because I wonder if they have meetings seasonally to prepare as a region, if they, you know, depending on what kind of weather is being forecasted or what kind of changes, things like that. That's what I'm asking.
My apologies, I misunderstood the question. So yes, we do have regular meetings if, let's say, there's an inclement weather event, or there's excessive heat, or there's the potential for flooding. We are on coordination calls based on projections of what's going to occur, and then the information that's shared with me, I share with the Director of Emergency Services, City Administrator.
Good. Wonderful, thank you. And then another question. Are we actively recruiting and training volunteers from the community?
We are. So historically, our community emergency response team has been more of a, what's considered a catch-and-release program. We train them, make sure that they're, they can share their newfound knowledge with their networks and be self-sustainable within their communities. And occasionally, we are able to bring people back into the volunteer program and engage them and keep that sustained interest.
Is that done yearly?
We have, as of right now...
I recently saw, like, the new class that just finished or completed their certification.
Yes, so we have been doing three courses a year, and the most recent course in March had 23 graduates, no dropouts, which historically with the hybrid version, we kind of lose interest with the online version, where people just kind of fall out and don't complete the course. But we do our best to work with community members. We know everybody has rigorous schedules, and we do make up sessions as well whenever possible.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments from the council? No? Well, thank you. You were just here to receive the report. Okay. There are no future council-initiated agenda items, and we move on to the City Administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. We have a quick presentation tonight from our Assistant to the City Manager, Bryce Atkins. As you all know, the state is going through its legislative council, or I'm sorry, calendar right now, and will be wrapping up in May. And so through our work with the League of California Cities and other legislative groups, we have a few slides presented to you of some bills that we see could impact Gilroy or our operations. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bryce. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council. So we're presenting this tonight, again, as City Administrator, for as mentioned, for awareness of known bills that would affect Gilroy specifically. So these are various stages along the legislative process. Actually, most of them are pretty early in the process. So they're not guaranteed to pass. We do see a lot of bills that go and then die in committee or don't succeed off the floor. But some of these will have advocacy efforts that are underway or may become underway to modify them as they go through the process. So we want to make sure to bring that to your attention before as we start talking about these. So the first one is SB 1037, which increases penalties for housing element non-compliance. So if the Attorney General were to have to enforce either against the city for either failing to adopt the housing element revisions that they provide to us, or any state law that requires the city to ministerially approve any land use decisions, and we don't, then the city would be subject to a penalty between $10,000 to $50,000 per month for each violation, as well as possibly reimbursing the Attorney General's office for fees to prosecute us, basically. If the city does not pay the penalty, then the court may require the state controller to intercept our city funds, likely sales tax disbursements. They did make this a bill of statewide concern, which means it does apply to charter cities. The next one is SB 937. It changes our permit fee collection timeframe. So there's a couple of small minor edits. So there's an entitlement extension in previous bills to extend for 18 months, and they're moving those entitlements out to 24 months within a certain range of when those entitlements are granted. It also caps utility service fees to actual expenses incurred. But the biggest change to us is, for us, that applies some risk to us financially is that the, for priority residential development projects, so those that hit certain triggers for affordability. The city could not require payment of fees or charges for public facilities until a certificate of occupancy is issued. Typically, we collect it before then, receive our funds. So this would essentially be that the project would be able to be lived in at this point before we could actually demand payment. And we are able to enter into contracts to require payment later, as long as the city posts a model contract on the website before the contract is demanded from developers. So that's something we'll have to be watchful of in the future. AB 2433 is private third-party building inspections. So cities must post fees online for building inspections, which we already do that. But applicants may contact, if the applicant's expense private building inspectors, if the city has later than allowed timeframes to respond or conduct their inspections. So for plan checks, if the city delays more than 30 days, they can get their own inspectors to do the plan checks and submit through affidavit that it complies with the building code. And inspections, if not completed by the city within five days of receiving the request for inspection, which is an extremely intense timeframe or minimal timeframe for us, the applicant could get a third-party building inspector to do the actual inspection of the improvements, and then just provide us with a form saying that they complied with the state building code. And the city may provide a list of recommended inspectors, but does not state that we can mandate certain inspectors only. And then again, that convention has, they have to provide an affidavit inspector, and penalty of perjury applies, but the concern is that, you know, obviously you have people that they're working for the applicant, not for the city, when they do their inspections. AB 2371 is another one that prevents cities from banning electrified security fences. So cities may, to a certain degree at this point, prohibit or regulate electrified security fencing around commercial, manufacturing, industrial property. The bill adds vehicle and material retail purposes to that list, and then states that cities may no longer ban electric security fencing or regulate the standards as long as the fencing is around such property and meets International Electro-Technical Commission standards. All other electrified security fencing may still be regulated by the city and by ordinance, and they do make it statewide concern, so it does apply to charter cities. 1890 is public works projects reporting. This one's actually relatively minimal impact to us. It adds a little bit more responsibility for us for any public works projects and contracts that we have out there. So we're required to notify the Department of Industrial Relations whenever the identity of contractor or subcontractor changes while performing the project. And then within 30 days, if the contract change exceeds $10,000. SB 1209 is LAFCO insurance coverage. What this bill does is allows LAFCO to acquire this condition for processing any request that we may make to the commission, that they can put a condition that we have to agree to defend, indemnify, and hold harmless the commission of its offers and agents for any claim or damages related to action or termination of the commission. It doesn't state whether it's to what we're asking for or any decision at all involving the matter, but it does allow them that opportunity to put that condition on us. AB 2583, school walk zones. It reduces the school zone speed limits from 25 to 20 miles per hour. It allows the city to establish 25 mile-per-hour speed limit when approaching a school district from a distance of 500 to 1,000 feet. It does exempt school zones from what constitutes, say, a speed trap as defined in the vehicle code, meaning that even though it's not being done by an engineering study on the speeds or travel, I'm sorry, traffic, it is exempted from that defense by violator. So they can't get out of it for being a prima facia limit. AB 2430 ends affordable housing monitoring fees for certain projects. So if a density bonus development project is approved and certain conditions are met, including being 100% affordable, the city may no longer apply a monitoring fee to offset costs to modern force affordability restrictions and performance. This applies as well to any qualifying development that already is in existence, is currently undertaking, or currently paying monitoring fees with the city. So that's potentially a loss of revenue to offset costs and monitoring, making sure they perform their affordability covenants. AB 2561, this is the best for last. It's to meet and confer on vacancies. So this bill would require that for any bargaining unit that has 10% vacancy rate for the city for more than 90 days of the past 180 days, then the city must meet and confer with the bargaining unit to publish a plan to fill all vacant positions within the next 180 days. It requires a public hearing to present the plan to the city council, and that the city must publish the plan then on the city's website for one year. And the bill proposes it to be a matter of statewide concern, meaning that as a charter city, we will be obligated to comply with that provision as well. So our next staff will continue monitoring these bills and engage with advocacy groups as appropriate, such as the League of California Cities. It's important to note that all these bills are still in the first house of origin, and so they still have to go through and finish up with, on their floors, go across to the other house, go through their process. So we could see a lot of amendments, either lessening any kind of negative impacts, but at the same time, also afford opportunities for additional adds to those legislation as well. That completes the report.
All right. Thank you, Bryce. And now we have more good news from the city admin, from the city attorney.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Bryce, does this just affect cities, or does it go for the state too?
So in some of the laws, the state does have a role. Most of these are city-focused, but it applies either across the state, or in some of the state has a function within them as well. There's about 5,000 bills that are currently being considered in the legislature. The vast majority of them apply to our states or counties. A lot of them do apply to the city as well, but they're pretty innocuous to us. These are ones that have inordinate impacts on the city if they happen to go through.
Okay, I'm going to report to the council on a case you may have read about in the newspapers. It's a U.S. Supreme Court case called Sheets, S-H-E-E-T-Z, v. County of El Dorado, and it concerns impact fees on a housing project. And we've been eagerly awaiting this because there are very few U.S. Supreme Court cases on such matters, but unfortunately, this decision is a bit underwhelming. I'll explain why I say that. As you know, there are several kinds of fees that can be assessed on projects. One kind is a sort of ad hoc fee that's assessed on an individual project. An example of that is in the Supreme Court Dolan case about 30 years ago, where a lady who owned a hardware store wanted to expand the store, and the city of Tygar, Oregon, said, "You can expand the store, but you have to build a bike path behind your store, along a creek, in sort of in accordance with the city plan for bike paths." And she challenged that and said, "Well, my store has nothing to do with bikes. Nobody rides to my store on bicycles, so I don't create the need for this path, and so I shouldn't have to pay, I shouldn't have to give the city for free the land for the path." And the Supreme Court in the Dolan case agreed with her. And that case and a case called Nolan established the principle for these kind of fees on individual projects, that they have to be, first of all, it has to be a nexus to a need caused by the project. And secondly, the amount of the exaction or the fee has to be roughly proportional to the need created by the project. So that's for these ad hoc fees. The other kind of fees and exactions tend to go, from a legislative standpoint, citywide. For example, an impact fee, like a traffic fee, or the city of Gilroy, the public facilities fee. And these are fees that are established by a city on a citywide basis for a broad category of projects. And so there's a schedule, you know, so much per house, or so much per square foot for industrial development, et cetera. And those fees are imposed upon a broad class of projects, so the city does not have to show that each individual house causes a need for a traffic fee, but rather it's, generally speaking, that that category of development causes a need for traffic improvements, and therefore the city can charge a fee. And that's how impact fees are justified in California and have been for a great many years. And that's a constitutional provision as well in California. So the unanswered question that has never been quite decided by the U.S. Supreme Court is whether impact fees are sub, should be subject to the same kind of Nolan-Dolan analysis that says, in essence, you have to look at each individual project to see if that fee is appropriate for that specific project, not just for a category. So in the Sheets case, Mr. Sheets wanted to build a house. The county of El Dorado charged him $23,000 for a traffic fee, and it was a standard impact fee that had been justified presumably by a Lexis study, Lexis, a Nexus, a Nexus study in California that shows that the residential projects in certain parts of the county created a need for traffic improvements, and here was a reasonable way of portioning the fee. So he challenged the fee and said, "That fee is not fair because it doesn't relate specifically to my house." So he raised the issue of whether these kind of fees, the impact fees that we all use, have to be particularized to the exact project to which they're applied, the way the ad hoc fees that are subject to Nolan and Dolan do. So the Supreme Court issued a unanimous nine-judge decision written by Judge Justice Barrett, which answers a different question, unfortunately, not the question that was posed. And the question that Justice Barrett answered is a question of, as she says, "The takings clause," in other words, the constitutional restriction on taking property without compensation, "does not distinguish between legislative and administrative permit conditions." Well, that wasn't really the question posed. We all know that legislative enactments by a city council can cause a taking. For example, if the council passed a resolution saying that they're going to build a new city hall on somebody's property and just take the property for free, that would be an unconstitutional taking without due, without just compensation. That's obvious. But that's the question she answered. And all the justices agreed, but there were several concurrences, and, for example, Justice Kavanaugh wrote a concurrence with whom Justice Kagan and Justice Jackson joined in, and he says, "I write separately to underscore that the court has not previously decided and today explicitly declines to decide whether, quote, 'a permit condition imposed on a class of properties,' like impact fees, must be tailored with the same degree of specificity as a permit condition that targets a particular development, like the Nolan-Dolan fees." Well, that's the exact question that actually the case posed. And as he, and he says, he cites Nolan and Dolan, says, "Those decisions had no occasion to address permit conditions such as impact fees." So he is emphasizing that, in fact, this case, which everybody had been eagerly awaiting to find out what the Supreme Court would say about impact fees, really doesn't answer the question. So as far as we know, the California standard for impact fees still is valid. You require a Nexus study and a showing of reasonable proportionality to a class of projects. But we don't know that for sure because several justices kind of hammered on how unfair it was to charge certain kinds of fees, without really providing a principle, though. So that's why I say the case is unfortunately underwhelming. It doesn't, I think, for the moment, change anything that we're doing about impact fees, and we'll have to see if future courts, including the Supreme Court, do address the exact issue that the case really posed and that they should have addressed. that the case really posed, and that they should have addressed. Anyway, that completes my report.
Are there, are there any cases in the pipeline to address that?
I don't think so that I'm aware of, because everybody's been waiting for this one. So, any other questions?
So does the guy have to pay his fees or not?
Well, just a second, I'll tell you. At the end of her decision, she says, "Whether the party's other arguments are preserved and how they bear on Sheets' legal challenge are for the state courts to consider in the first instance." So in other words, this is going back to California to decide whether his particular fee is valid or not. So in about two years, it might be an answer to your question. Anyway, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. We have no closed session tonight, so I adjourn the meeting at 7:30.